Seven PM, I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, September 26, 2022. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover, Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Jane?
Here.
Mr. Carrubus?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
And Ms. Demme?
Present.
We have a quorum. Ms. Demme, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge, pledge. To the Lord of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, October 17th. We have two board salutes tonight. Mr. Rising?
Absolutely. The Board would like to salute Wabonzi Valley Choir Department, selected to perform with Broadway in Chicago. The Board salutes the Wabonzi Valley Choir Department on being selected as one of the three choirs in Illinois invited to perform with Broadway in Chicago on Saturday, October 15th, for their production of Children of Eden in concert at the Cadillac Palace Theater. There are two performances, one at 2:00 PM and one at 8:00 PM. Ticket information can be found on Wabonzi's website. Congratulations to all the students and staff involved.
Ms. Jane?
2023 National Merit Semi-finalist announced. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced 54 District 204 students that have been identified as semifinalists in the 68th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Matea Valley had seven students, Niqua Valley had 37 students, and Wabonzi had 10 students identified as semifinalists. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue the competition for more than 7,250 National Merit Scholarships, worth more than $28 million that will be offered next spring. Merit Scholars are selected based on their skills, accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous college studies. Congratulations to all these students and good luck as the scholarship competition moves forward.
So now we'll have our student representative report by Kushi Vashev from Niqua.
Hello and good evening. My name is Kushi Vashev. I'm a senior at Niqua Valley High School, and it is my pleasure to represent Niqua here tonight. We have had a phenomenal start to this year, moving past the complications which were the past two years. On September 23rd, our seniors celebrated the start of their last year with a senior sunrise planned by Student Council Senior Class. Over 100 seniors woke up early, gathering at the football field before school with snacks, blankets, and lots of energy, starting off their final year with a spirit of camaraderie and making memories. Our Student Council representatives have been working hard since the beginning of this year. We filled the entire box of donations for the IPPC Winter Accessory Drive, which ended Thursday, September 22nd. Niqua Badminton brought back their annual Birdie Bash, held on Monday, September 19th, an event to bring together Badminton and non-Badminton players alike in a spirit of fun. Everyone was given a chance to compete for the prize of free homecoming tickets, and over 60 players participated. With homecoming coming up this week, many clubs decorated windows around our school about our homecoming theme, "It's Electric." It's exciting to see everyone working hard to represent their club and the creative approaches they take, from disco dancers to cultural outfits. This week, we kicked off homecoming celebrations with our Spirit Days. PJ Day, Western Wednesday, Denim Thursday, and Neon Friday follow today's Monochrome Monday. Not only is there fun, exciting themed days, but also exciting events. As we speak, our annual Niqua Knows It Can Dance is taking place, a school-wide dance competition with students in groups with their clubs, teams, and friends. I'm sure we are going to have some spectacular dance performances. Niqua's annual Olympics is on Wednesday, September 28th, where teams of 10 to 12 students will have the opportunity to compete in various challenges for the ultimate prize, free homecoming tickets. As we move through this week, we get closer to our iconic pep rally. On Friday, September 30th, all our students will meet in the stadium to promote school spirit and foster excitement for our homecoming game against Matea Valley High School. We're looking forward to the student competitions, homecoming recognitions, and stellar performances by our cheer team, dance team, orchestras, and the marching Wildcats. Finally, we end our homecoming week with our "It's Electric" themed homecoming dance. A huge thank you to our special events committee, administration, and everyone involved who make this dance possible. I'm sure this dance will make Niqua students proud to be a Wildcat. Aside from homecoming, our botany class has been working hard to create a landscaping plan to replace over 40 diseased trees that were chopped down. Their main focus has been the 11 trees previously near the marquee board at our front entrance. Furthermore, Niqua's Mindset Student Leadership Program began its second year last week. Mindset is a leadership program focusing on fostering leadership skills among students who already possess such roles in certain clubs or sports. Not only does it help further these skills, but the program is also designed to encourage and support underclassmen to get more involved. In addition to this program, most Niqua clubs began their meetings last week. I know every Wildcat is excited to join new clubs, make new friends, and impact their community. We are incredibly impressed with our drama department. They just finished their improv show on September 15th and 16th, and there were amazing acts from all of the cast. They are now working hard on their children's show, Alice at Wonderland. We hope to see you there on October 7th or October 8th. On September 29th, Niqua News Production releases their first Wildcat Weekly of this year to bring us the most important news from our school. Finally, Niqua academics have been stellar. Thirty-seven of our amazing seniors are National Merit Scholar semifinalists. Congratulations to you all. We can't see what else you achieve. It's been a pleasure speaking to you tonight. Thank you for listening, and as always, go Wildcats.
Thank you very much. It is now time for public comment, and 60 minutes is allowed for public comment. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who your audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the Board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. So tonight, we have three speakers. The first speaker is Shannon Adcock.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Adcock. I am a mother of three and I am a district parent with two boys at Gregory Middle School. Moms and dads deserve to be respected partners in their children's education, and every stakeholder in our community should be focused on the academic growth of the 26,000-plus students in our schools. Academic learning is the sole business of public schools regardless of the political or the social climate. District 204 is in the business of educating students, and its success or failure in this mission has profound generational consequences. Students who don't read fluently by the end of third grade are more likely to struggle in the future and even drop out of school, studies show. Current third graders were in kindergarten when teacher unions pushed for school closures, when Zoom became a remote babysitter, and when Governor Pritzker pushed the masking and quarantining of healthy students. All the above disrupted their learning, however, the pre-COVID academic scores were already showing cause for concern. In 2019, 41% of District 204 students were not reading at grade level. That is 11,163 students. Forty-three percent of students were not proficient in math. That is 11,623 students. Then the failed pandemic policies began. Parents and community members are rightfully wondering when school leadership will openly address the concerns over learning loss and lacking curricula integrity. Case in point, last meeting, not one Board member mentioned the content of the National Sex Ed Standard Second Edition. Why? Illinois is the only state to adopt the National Sex Education Standards. They are radical. I encourage all district parents to learn about these lessons and to visit awakeil.com/optout for information. It also contains an opt-out form for various lessons or discussions that may be in conflict with your expectations. As a concerned parent, I ask that 204 formally opt out of comprehensive sex ed as soon as possible. Every school board in Illinois should be discussing the issue of declining performance, including this district. It affects property values, community desirability, and most importantly, it is affecting the future success of our children. We're at a point where 204 stakeholders, aka the taxpayers and parents, are discussing how to replace the school board with individuals who do understand there's a problem and will take measures to correct it. The next election to do so is April 4th, 2023. The Board members with expiring terms are Justin Carrubus, Mark Rising, and Natasha Grover. Our community deserves candidates who have courage, who have integrity, who have humility, who have critical thought, and common sense to ensure all students are inspired to reach their greatest potential. Thank you.
The next speaker is Caitlin DeVolder.
Hi there. My name is Caitlin DeVolder. I do live in the district, and I have two daughters who also go to schools in this district. I'm here to talk about busing again. In the past month, there's been an accident on Eola in Montgomery at 8 o'clock in the morning on September 7th, and a car has plowed through another fence on Montgomery. As well as there were two women walking down Keating to Eola to their gym that were followed by a man and got their license plate number, when they called the police, he was a registered sex offender, and this was right outside our neighborhood. I spoke with Dr. Tally about how we were told that we were supposed to go to our schools for transportation questions, and he agreed, and also how the Fisher principal told us that we would be getting bused. He also mentioned that he knew about that as well. So I'm just wondering why we aren't given the year-long bus extension like White Eagle has. We were told, we were given the same amount of notice, they were given a year extension, we were not. When I asked Dr. Tally about this, he said, "Well, what would that year do for you guys?" The same thing it would do for White Eagle. It'll get our kids to school safe for another year at least while we have time to fight this. And the other issue which is really concerning is the fact that we've been coming to school board meetings since the beginning of August, and not one school board member has reached out to any of us parents. You haven't taken any time out of your day to say, "Hey, I know you're concerned. I want to hear more from you," just so that we know that you're listening. And honestly, not just me, but all the moms would love to hear from you guys so that we know that you do hear us every time we come up here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Dubiel, and I am a parent in the district. I live at 95th and Book, but I've already taken my kids out of 204 Elementary, so I'm not here for them. We've seen over the course of the last 10 years some dramatic shifts in the standard of education and the environment of the schools in IPSD 204. We moved here for lower taxes and better schools. And recently, as Mrs. Adcock pointed out, the National Sex Education Standards Manual came out, and Illinois adopted this, and we have yet to hear from IPSD 204. And I'm here on behalf of the parents that are too busy working tonight because they have to earn twice as much for half as much, or the parents that are just not aware of what's going on, or the kids that don't have parents that will advocate for them and this filth. You mentioned before the public comment that we need to keep this respectable for the people that might be in the audience, the people that might be watching online, the people that might be in the room. I'm not comfortable reading to you some of the material that's in this guidance, which in the bottom corner, it says it's the future of sex education. I wonder how many of you have actually read this? It's over 65 pages. And if you have read it, I wonder what would happen if you read it to your parents and the people in your family? My family came here from other countries about 100 years ago, and when they came here to the United States of America, they did not come for this. I thought by now that we would be getting manuals in school and preparing the children when they graduate to know how to change their oil, or change a tire, or balance their checkbook, or know how much money they can afford to spend on college without, and still be able to pay it back with the job that they were training for in college. And instead, they're getting a manual about masturbation, and it's going to be taught in school, in grade school. The only parts of their body that should be stimulated are above their neck. Their brain should be stimulated. They should have thick manuals about how they're going to solve issues like man-made climate change, or how they're going to solve things, or maybe debating modern monetary theory. But instead, we have yet to hear from IPSD 204 about whether or not our district is adopting this. I strongly believe that if most parents knew what was in here, they would understand and appreciate that this has no place in elementary school, it has no place in middle school, and it arguably has no place in high school. Some of this material wouldn't have even been taught in college. So it's incumbent upon our school board-
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time is up.
-to jump on this and say unanimously that we disagree with this and we won't be adopting this in IPSD 204.
Thank you. The next agenda item is our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie community. I have to start off my comments with sad news. Dr. Adam Pakai, former principal of Hill Middle School and a longtime assistant principal of Wabonzi Valley, passed away last week. He worked for the district for 18 years, and I know there are many who were influenced and mentored by him. We send our condolences to his family, and may they know what a valued member of the Indian Prairie School community he was. September 15th to October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month. It's a time across the nation when we celebrate the great contributions that more than 60 million Hispanic Americans have provided to our culture and society. There is a rich history of how Hispanic Americans have contributed to science, arts, literature, education, and our overall society. Our schools in Indian Prairie have a rich history of celebrating our diverse cultures, and I'm positive that they will be commemorating Hispanic Heritage Month over the next 30 days. Indian Prairie School District is inviting you to attend our Mental Health Symposium on Saturday, October 15th, at Matea Valley High School from 8:00 AM to 12:30. The symposium will include a continental breakfast, keynote session, multiple breakout sessions, and a community resource fair. The first 300 attendees will receive an event bag containing mental health resources, promotional information, and items from sponsors, and an event souvenir. Childcare will be provided for children's ages 3 to 10. Information about the event may be found on our website under District News. I'm also able to provide a teaser about next summer. We will have STEM Camp again next summer. Our team is working on this now, and dates will come out later. We will have two one-week STEM Camp programs. The people who taught it last summer are very excited about doing it again, and I know the students thoroughly enjoyed it, so we're very happy to let you know that we will be having that again. I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you. I remember the STEM Camp had a long waitlist for people who wanted to get into that program, so that's great to hear. Okay, next, we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for approval of consent agenda items D through J.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through J as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Grover? Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
And Ms. Jane?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to approve the strategic plan as district goals as presented.
I move to approve the strategic plan as district goals as presented.
My second. Is there a discussion?
Ms. Donahue, I'm going to call up onto the screen the presentation to hopefully walk through why, I believe, pardon me, the strategic plan should be our district goals. Just give it a moment. Last school year, for the 2021 school year, we had as district goals the following, and I'm not going to read what's on the screen completely by any shape or form, but I think it's important for everyone to understand that we have had district goals over the last several years. One of our goals was that we'd help all students grow socially, emotionally, and academically, and you can see underneath there several specific items that we were looking for. Also, last school year, we had as a goal hire and retain high-quality effective teachers, school leaders, and support staff. We also had manage resources efficiently and effectively, and also to be student and community-focused. For the 2021 school year, you can see that we had very similar situations with our goals. Help all students grow socially, emotionally, hire and retain high-quality effective teachers, manage resources, and be student and community-focused. So the goals were very similar over the last couple of years. We approved the strategic plan at our last board meeting, and what I want you to see is a crosswalk between what we have in our current strategic plan and our prior district goals. I believe you will find that our strategic plan is a more robust set of goals that we should be using rather than using our district goals. In our strategic plan under Priority 1, we have focus on student development, and you can see that there is a specific objective there, provide all students with high-quality curriculum, and a measure of success. More than 50% of students in grade K to 8 will meet or exceed national typical growth. This compares to our prior district goal of help all students grow socially, emotionally, which we had as an indicator by June 30th, students will be assessed in the area of mathematics and reading. So you can see that our prior district goal is subsumed in our current strategic goal in many ways, and that is only one of the objectives found in Priority 1. In our strategic plan, Priority 2, invest in staff, our objective is focus on the hiring and retention of staff, and our measurement is we're looking at staff retention rates. That compares very favorably to our prior district goal of hire and retain high-quality effective teachers, which was measured by looking at the number of teachers who were rated at the excellent ratings. Again, the former district goal and now our strategic goal, there is much similarity there. You can also see in Priority 3, engage with the community, and under our prior district goal, that we'd be student-community focused. By June 30th, the district will host at least 10 opportunities for the community to give their input about the school system. Again, our strategic goal has the information in it that allows us to measure what we used to measure before as a district goal. And finally, in Priority 4, optimize resources and operation. The district will receive recognition status, which is very similar to what we had in the past. The district will receive the school financial profile designation of recognition, and then there's more to the strategic plan in that we're looking at creating an advisory group, creating a facility plan, and other things that we can say that will engage with our, ensure that we're being an effective use of our taxpayer money. And so it is my recommendation that the strategic plan become our district goals over the next five years, that we will have an annual report, that we'll be able to share where we are with our plan, and that we have an annual presentation to the Board and to our community about the status of our plan.
All right. Is there comments or questions?
I definitely support moving towards a strategic plan. The district goals were kind of a skeletal structure, and I believe the strategic plan is much more robust. What I really like, though, is on Slide 10, bringing back the annual report. We have historically had an annual report, and giving the community a snapshot of where we are, how we've progressed with our goals, I think will be beneficial to all. Sometimes the material at board meetings can be dry and boring, and you don't have a lot of people in the audience or online to digest this information. So it is, I think, the communication piece is what I take away as being very beneficial for everyone. Thanks.
Is there other comments or questions?
Yeah, and I think I've mentioned this before, but-
Is yours on?
Yeah, sorry, it's not in my face. I think I had mentioned this before, like right before I had gotten on board, our district had like over 30 goals. And I believe the year, either the year that I came on board or the year after, the district kind of modeled it after what you showed that we had the last two years. Very similar to that, of course, you know, the little intricacies would change, but for the most part, we focused on those key areas. I like that we still are, but what I enjoy more is that our goals now represent community input. They represent teachers and students and community members and parents and business owners and government officials. All the people that were part of that strategic plan are woven into the new goals, which does two things. It's wonderful that our community is telling us we were on track, but it was also good that we involved them in this process. And, you know, I think going forward as we move through the strategic plan, I'm sure we'll have other community events where we will get feedback from the community. So I very much enjoyed that this was a community effort with the strategic plans and with the goal of the district that the Board's essentially responsible for. So, thanks.
Did you, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had a comment.
What did I? No, I'm sorry, I was just-
Go ahead.
I appreciate, I echo the fact that I think it's imperative and it's productive that we had all of our stakeholder input, and as many of us sitting here and in the audience, you know, as a productive entity, whether it's a corporate or nonprofit entity, it's important to have a blueprint of where you're going to go. And having a strategic plan that is laid out for five years, able to look at the specific goals that will help support that strategic plan and make those adjustments on those annual goals is really important for not only the administrators, but for each entity of our staff to understand where they fit into and what their contribution is to the success overall of our strategic plan. So I appreciate it. I thank you. I thank our community members, our students and our staff that were involved, and I look forward to us having a communication piece. As Board Member Carrubus pointed out, that our community will be able to see where we stand and provide input as we all look to succeed for our students. Thank you.
So I agree with the comments that were provided. I think this is a robust plan.
So, I agree with the comments that were provided. I think this is a robust plan that gives us not just a one-year view, but five years out. I think we've discussed this at other meetings, so I think the community input was critical to creating the document, and I also agree with Mr. Carubus about the annual report. I think often, we have topics presented at our board meetings that people don't want to watch or pay attention to, and that having something written to share is helpful for people to catch up and see what we've been up to. So, with that, I will call for a, call for the roll. Michelle?
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover? Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
And Mr. Rising?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, I need a motion and a second to approve the action regarding a student discipline matter as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the action regarding a student discipline matter as presented.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue?
Yes. The motion passes. Okay, and now it is time for our presentation from Trudy Ransom regarding I P E F update. Welcome. Your first one for I P E F, I think.
Yes, yes, it is. I'd like to thank everyone for...
Is it on?
Is it on? I'll learn, right? Okay. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. As Ms. Donahue said, my name is Trudy Ransom, and I am the new Executive Director for the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, or I P E F. Indian, I P E F has been a proud partner with I P S D 204 for the last 34 years. We were founded in 1988. Our primary mission at that time was to support the fine arts in the district and the Fine Arts Festival. I'm pleased to say that since then, we've grown and expanded with the needs of the district and have gone on to support some wonderful programs, including STEM, Project Lead the Way, the robotics program, and in more recent days, some of our more social services needs, including things like counseling and assisting our low-income and McKinny Vento students. Our primary goal, as it says on the slide, is to create and support programs that enrich the lives of our students, staff, families, and community. This is definitely a group effort. Some of the programs that I P E F is going to be supporting this year for our students include, of course, the Fine Arts Festival, which made a triumphant comeback this last spring in May. We were so excited to bring it back live, and I believe it is one of the biggest events we do here in the district. Estimates for attendance this last May were somewhere between 32 and 34,000 people. That's pretty amazing. And we are also supporting our holiday concerts, whether you call it collage, crystal, or prism at your high school. I P E F is a strong supporter of these holiday concerts that are so popular with our parents and students. I'm excited to announce that we're once again offering Young Hearts for Life program for our high schoolers. We've been able to do this since 2019, which means that if you have a high school senior this year, that means that they have not yet had an opportunity to come in and get a free heart screening. These heart screenings are in conjunction with Edward Elmhurst Healthy Driven. We have licensed cardiologists coming in to give our heart screenings. Last time that we did this in 2019, we gave 6,000 heart screenings, so it is a project. It takes a lot of volunteers, and I would highly recommend that my own son did it when he was a freshman. He was in the classroom, did it, and it's quick painless, that detects the... Done this program. They've changed our life.
Do you need to switch that? Sorry.
Hey, I'll just put on my teacher voice. It's fine. So, we are also doing the Back on Track program again this year. This is giving counseling to our at-risk students in middle school and high school. Valley Runway provides prom dresses and tuxedos to students who need them. We think that cost and pricing should never be an issue for students to experience these once-in-a-lifetime events. And then finally, the Kid Essentials program, where we support some of our most vulnerable students with some basic necessities, and we do this in conjunction with the school district. We would never leave out our teachers and staff in our programs. Teacher innovation grants are up and running. We already have teachers applying for these grants, and we are very excited about all of the new and innovative ideas that they have to include new programs in their classrooms. We will be offering the Gifts of Gratitude program again this year. Gifts of gratitude give parents and community members an opportunity to donate to the foundation and send a message to their teachers. It's a fantastic way for parents to tell teachers how much of a difference they've really made in the students' lives, and I can tell you that some of these, I have read a lot of them, they are absolutely heartwarming, and I cannot get over how many fantastic teachers that we have in this district. Finally, the A+ program is off and running again for its ninth year, thanks to our partners at Wells Fargo. Tomorrow is our very first A+ award. It's top secret. I can't tell you where we're going, but watch for the video later this week. It's going to be fantastic. Right now, we are, I guess, neck-deep in Team I P E F 22, 2022. We are three weeks from race day, and this year, our team has 228 team members. About a little more than half shake out to be staff and their family, about 30% parents, and the rest, community, alum, and students. A special shout-out to our nine-year members. These amazing people have run with us every year since we started, and I think it's a really good representative of the kinds of folks who are running with us every year. We've got a high school principal, a preschool teacher, a husband-and-wife team who have steadily followed their kids through the school system, so they just keep representing whatever school their child is at, and a middle school parent. And I would also like to point out that every one of our board members and Dr. Tally are signed up to run and/or walk with us this year, and I think that really speaks a lot to the kind of support that we have in this district from our administration and our community. There are a lot of ways folks are supporting Team I P E F in 2022. The Matia Valley Cross-Country Team is once again managing an aid station at the race. Thank you so much, Matia. We have eight Spirit Squad locations available this year, where the schools come and they bring in a Spirit Squad and they cheer on the runners. We have seen everything from folks in dinosaur costumes to drumming on upside-down pails. I mean, it just, it's fantastic, and I can tell you as someone who has run this race repeatedly, that boost of energy is fantastic, and we really appreciate what they do. Those folks are also available to win prizes for their schools. The top three Spirit Squads do take home or take back to their schools cash prizes, and a lot of folks now are busy donating to our runners, and we really, really appreciate that. All of our runners, all of our charity runners, have committed to raising a minimum of $204, and that minimum is due, oh my goodness, it's already Saturday, October the 1st. But I would like to point out that 50% of the money that these runners raise comes right back into our schools. So, in a giant check, which is always fun to give out, and over the last eight years, Team I P E F alone has raised over $1 million. You might want to stick this on your calendar. We're asking you to save the date for Inspire 23. We had our inaugural Inspire event last year in 2022, and it was a great success. People were very excited about it. It features student performers from our high schoolers. We also had art from elementary through high school displayed at this event. It is Friday, March the 10th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. There will also be food and drinks, and if you can't make it, there is a silent auction that you can participate in online, so you don't have to be there to help donate, but we would absolutely love to see you there. I'd like to close... ...and give them a helping hand with their 204 minimums. Honor a teacher or a staff member. Please nominate that... Award. Give them a gift of gratitude. Tell them how much what they are doing makes a difference in your... Information about any of these programs that I've talked about tonight, or any volunteer opportunities, or donation opportunities, or sponsorship opportunities, please visit our website at ipef204.org. Thank you.
Okay. Is there comments? Everyone's quiet tonight.
Foundation is so supportive of all of our schools, our staff, and our students, and just so proud that we, as a district, have the opportunity to be so socially-minded and civically-minded for our communities and our schools. So, thank you so much, and to your board and all the volunteers that support you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to compliment you, Trudy. You've jumped in with both feet, you know. It sounds like you've got a great handle on all these programs and enrichment opportunities, you know, the teacher grants and A+ awards, and there's other things that you do even besides this that I P E F has a hand in, in a lot of STEM things throughout our district and things like that. So, thank you for all you do. You are a lean, mean fighting machine, along with the I P E F board, who I know are big supporters, and so not only thank you to them, but also thank you to the I P E F board, because there's a lot of other people that are mostly parents, some community members, but mostly parents that all have a hand in helping you with these opportunities. So, I just want to send across my gratitude.
Thank you, Mr. Rising. We do have an amazing bunch of folks who help us do what we do.
I just want to echo what my fellow board members stated, but I also want to speak to new parents who are new to our community, who may not realize that many of the enriching programs that we have are because of your work, of I P E F's work, and they may not realize that it is funded and supported by this wonderful foundation. I know it took me a while to understand, when I moved here 12 years ago, to understand the role of I P E F, and I think it could be easily taken for granted, but what you do and the programming you offer is just truly incredible, and having attended many of the events for the first time last year, I want to encourage everyone to look out for these events and partake and do whatever you can. You may donate a little bit, but you get tenfold in return, and that's the magic of working with I P E F. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jane.
Do you have something? I just have a quick thing adding to that. How do we donate? If you want to donate, I know you said you have your website up there, so do we just, is it easy enough? You go there and you click for those new parents?
You can go there and click right on the donate button right at the top of the page. It's just that easy.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the work of the foundation and the others. You know, from my vantage point, to see, literally see 34 years of the foundation from where I've sat, from when my father was one of the founding members to today, to see it grow from zero to 5 million is very impressive. So, to see that impact in the community of many people, being on the board of many people in the community, supporting it, I believe another way to donate is through the PushCoin...
Yes.
Feature.
Yes.
At registration, when you are signing up for various things, you could make a donation at that time through the drop-down menus to contribute to I P, I P E F, so you don't have to find another website if you don't want to.
That's very true, and it's that, that portal is always open on PushCoin, so if you're going in to pay fees for your kids' cross-country lessons or whatever, that we are in there. We're pretty close to the top, actually, which is rather flattering, and very convenient. But I have to say that the foundation could never do all of the amazing things that we do without parent contributions and community contributions. Our foundation, 60% of our income comes from those types of donations, and really, as was pointed out, it doesn't have to be huge. There are so many good people in this district who want to help, and if everybody just gives a little bit, we can do such amazing things here and present these amazing programs and more, if given the opportunity.
My last comment is on the Young Hearts for Life. In the district in 1980, we had a basketball player that did die of a heart attack at Wobonzie, and so to see it come to fruition, where now the technology, the science, the medicine allows for us to test for this and try to prevent it, and then you hear the stories of people that were literally, their lives were saved by the program, is immense. So, just on that fact alone, the foundation is worth supporting.
Thank you.
So, I just want to echo everything everyone has said. I would ask you to put slide three back up again, because Ms. Jane points out an important fact, that many people in our district don't understand I P E F or why we need it or why it exists, and if you have been to any of these programs and you like these programs, they were brought to you by the I P E F organization, and the support comes from the community for these programs. It's things the school district couldn't afford within their budget to do themselves in most cases, so it is a lot of things that people love and attend, but we do need people to really look at making a small donation, and a little bit does go a long way with us. So, I would encourage everyone to go and make a small donation or large donation to help out and make sure that these programs continue to be actively supported, and also new programs that we're constantly looking at. So, I thank you, Trudy, for all of your leadership now in your new role and the full board that supports you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So, now we have our presentation from Dr. Lewis Lee and Carrie Harry and our student representatives regarding annual recruitment and hiring report.
Good evening, President Donahue, members of the board, and Dr. Tally. Thank you for the opportunity to present... for the opportunity to present tonight on our annual hiring report. Joining me to present is our Director of Human Resources, Carrie Beth Harry. And if you stay around, you'll kind of hear from some three great future educators who I'll introduce in just a moment here. For tonight, we will present several topics for discussion. They include challenges and opportunities in our field, recent staffing that's taken place in our district. We'll also provide an update on the teacher workforce, not only in our district, but also in the state of Illinois. Take a look at some recruitment practices, staff retention, and finally, we'll also talk about our future focus and provide an update on our Grow Your Own Teacher program. Before we dive into our topics, we'd like to celebrate a little bit. Some of that celebration deals with Forbes and their annual report listed us as one of the top employers in the state of Illinois. We have made this list before, and this year we are ranked number thirty-three. In compiling this annual release of America's Best Employers, they divide the list into fifty-one rankings, and it's one for each of the fifty states, which includes the District of Columbia, and it's come out by surveying over eighty thousand Americans who work for businesses with at least five hundred employees. Surveys are conducted on a rolling basis from October two thousand and twenty-one to May of two thousand and twenty-two, and then responses regarding the same employers were compared throughout the process. So, as I said earlier, we made thirty-three in Illinois, so it's most notable to know that we were the only public or private K through twelve district in the top fifty. We also beat out some employers like Target, Cigna, and even Red Lobster. So, our students, they come from all various socioeconomic, religious, cultural, and many other diverse backgrounds, and we celebrate that diversity within our district. As a district, diversity represents one of the three areas we are committed to achieving for all of our students, the other two being equity and inclusion. The reference that you see on the screen is the Board Adopted Equity Belief Statement, and this serves as a guide toward our commitment to support the social, emotional wellness, and academic achievement of all of our students. It's important that we have a workforce that also reflects this diversity. For our purposes in this presentation, we'll be focusing on the categories of race and ethnicity in our workforce. A fun fact that you may or may not have known is that when you look at our website, the career section of our website is the number one most visited site on Indian Prairie I P S D dot org, has upwards of annual eighty thousand clicks per year. So, in looking at that data, we actually were able to launch a redesign of this website. What you see up there is a graphic of what it looks like, and I'd encourage everyone, not just if you're interested in pursuing a position in our district, but to take a look, and we really tried to highlight not just the place to apply for, but why you would want to choose two oh four over any other, not only public K through twelve school district, but honestly, any other employer. So, as I mentioned earlier in some of our discussion that we want to talk about tonight, we continue to look for and hire passionate, dedicated, and professional educators and support staff who we are going to be excited to introduce data about in just a moment for this new two thousand and twenty-two to twenty twenty-three new higher class. We're extremely proud of the relationships they formed already this year, and establishing connections has always been the foundation of our recruitment strategy. This current job market is entirely unique. We've never faced anything like it in recent history, and there remain challenges in our efforts to provide a workforce that is fully complete and robust. We will share shortly what some of those areas are. As the slideshow shows, we are hiring, and we will use every opportunity to advertise for positions, actually including this one. So, never before during a board presentation have we taken time to encourage anyone who's watching right now. We are hiring for teaching assistants in our school district. The Q R code that's on the screen is live and active, and we encourage you to use your phone, and we have an upcoming virtual meeting coming up in October that we'd love to take some time and get to know you better.
I just want to add, even if you watch this tomorrow, it is still live and available for you as well.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. All right. That felt very commercially, but we will use every opportunity.
If the Q R code doesn't work, they go to our website still.
Absolutely. So, with that being said, I'd like to, at this point, turn it over to our Director, Carrie Beth Harry, who's going to start to walk us through this past hiring season.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share our data with you tonight. This slide represents our total staff by F T E and P T E. Our report to you primarily focuses on our teaching staff. Teaching staff is that's our largest group. That's represented by the sixty-six percent of them. It also identifies that twenty-five percent of our staff is support staff, five point eight is non-bargaining, and two point eight percent is administration. Our support staff includes all of our I P C A positions, that's the Indian Prairie Classified Association, and our non-bargaining staff includes occupational therapists, physical therapists, registered nurses, and staff on our technology, business, and H R teams. Our total F T E has increased by twenty-one point three F T E from what we reported to you last year. This increase in our licensed staff addresses student need, including mental health, special education, and English language learner support. We were able to use S R money, which is grant-funded, to finance these additional positions. The additions in classified positions include teaching assistance and health office assistance at each of the seven middle schools. The positions listed on this slide continue to be hard to fill because of a decreasing candidate pool. This, however, is not a challenge that is unique to district two oh four.
Here in the hard to fill, right up top, is our teaching assistance, but that being said, we do have other positions that we are also hiring for. The P D K poll is a poll that's been around for over fifty years. It's one of the most respected polls in our country. It looks at the public's perception of what they believe about educators in our country. Americans continue to give their local public schools the highest ratings in nearly fifty years, and one of those categories, they've expressed widespread trust in their teachers, and this has played out in some of their trust and how they look at attitudes towards public school. But when asked if they would want their child to become a teacher, sixty-two percent of survey respondents, for the first time in the P D K's poll's history, said no. We've never, that poll has never experienced the majority of the public saying that they are not encouraging or what like for their children to go into our industry. The P D K poll has been around since nineteen sixty-nine, and it's a survey that's done annually. The N O R C poll is something, organization out of the University of Chicago, and this poll has been around for seventy-five plus years. They, the N O R C company conducts research in many areas. Some of those include economics, markets, the workforce, global development, and one of the areas is also education. And their findings were very similar. Again, in a national poll, they found that fewer than one in five Americans would encourage a young person to become a K through twelve public school teacher. As we sort of just look at two recent surveys across the country, one of the things that we are focused on is how does that affect our pipeline and the supply of teachers, not just across the country, but in our state. Just last year, we were just over a hundred and thirty thousand educators in our state. It has only recently risen, within this past year, to another two thousand. In terms of demographics by gender and race, those have not moved. The teacher workforce in our state remains predominantly female and predominantly white. As you look at the teacher preparation programs in our state, there are sixty I H Es, which stands for Institutions of Higher Education, and the pipeline of students that are enrolling in those teacher preparation programs has been dwindling for quite some time. In fact, when you look at this graph, we were at a peak in two thousand and ten of just over thirty-two thousand candidates in the state of Illinois coming into our pipeline to become future educators. And then, starting in two thousand and fifteen, we had a drastic reduction in that. Now, you will see within some of the most recently reported data of two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, a small rebound, very small, in that it shows that we are up to about eighteen thousand educators. But I really want to draw your attention to that second line about completion. That line has not moved since two thousand and ten. What that line is showing us is that our most recent data is showing that just over forty-two hundred educators are coming out of institutions of higher education. That is less than one in three who are going in are coming out ready to teach in our workforce. We have a dwindling pipeline challenge. We do not have not only enough people who are wanting to come into our profession, but even markedly so for the, over the past twelve years, we do not have enough that are actually coming out. And this is a challenge. This challenge is also being felt as you look at I S B's recent survey of public K through twelve districts across our state, not just unit districts, but also elementary, middle, and high school districts. This survey is given, and districts are required to report by October first of what, how many unfilled positions they have. When you look at this chart, it shows back in two thousand and seventeen, we just had just over two thousand F T E that was unfilled. And fast forward to two thousand and twenty-two, this was just released weeks ago, and as such, it is, it has not been finalized, but right now it's showing that it has almost tripled in terms of unfilled positions that districts have across our state. When you tease out where these positions are, this next slide shows the categories of work staff and where this dwindling supply is happening. Most notably, teaching is there. It's the highest it's been in the past six years, but remember our commercial earlier about parapros? What you see there is just almost a tripling reported by districts of unfilled positions just in our parapros. School support personnel, that includes our school counselors, our nurses, psychs, social workers, S L Ps, our speech-language pathologists. So, what does that look like for our district? Because we know what the P D K polling is showing across the nation, we've just taken a look at what the state is showing, and so what about for two oh four? We are in our fifty-year history. We're celebrating our fiftieth anniversary this year, and when you look at our history, back in the two thousands and two thousand and tens is when we were, and even the late nineteen nineties, building schools at a fast pace. We saw rapid enrollment. And with that rapid enrollment, we also were experiencing a large number of staff and teachers, and it was just a robust period in our hiring. We are currently at a point, when you look at our salary schedule, that the large majority, percentage-wise, of our staff is at our highest step, step twenty-three on our salary schedule. We have a veteran's staff, and what that means is that our veteran's staff, as they've worked tremendously hard all of these years, they are entitled and well-deserved retirement, and that is coming. As much as I want them to stay, retirement for them is coming. And so, we know that in the, over the next five to ten years, because of the growth in our district and where our veteran's staff is, that we are going to have challenges that are coming, and how to actually meet in trying to bring in new staff to replace our veteran's staff. Currently, when we look at retirees in our district, we have a hundred and eighteen that are in our three-year pipeline. When you look at that across years, we have about fifty-three that are set to retire this school year, forty-eight in the two thousand and twenty-four school year, and then seventeen at this point that have elected retirement in two thousand and twenty-five. The majority of those retirements of that hundred and eighteen are at the elementary level. So, one of the things that we want to focus on is how can we increase the pipeline? Because I will continue, you'll continue to hear us talk about that we truly have a pipeline interest problem, or I should say, challenge in getting people not only to enter it, but excited to become an educator and be a part of this rewarding profession. Very quickly, the state recently switched to what's called Illinois Educator Preparation Profile, and part of this was done to ensure that all new Illinois teachers are learner-ready on day one in the classroom, and they also wanted to increase the diversity in the number of teachers. And so, these new reporting procedures really take a look at all of our institutions of higher education across the state and have a focus on the candidates that are entering them, and in that focus, how they are ranking themselves. The state ranks them by college and university based on a larger number of criteria that they have spelled out. What you have up there on the graphic shows the candidate demographics for students across our entire state. Again, it's very similar to what is our workforce right now, predominantly female candidates are still going into education. When that's broken across by demographics, race and ethnicity in this case, again, seventy-two percent, while it represents a larger diverse breakdown than what we currently have, clearly we still have work to do in this area. And the final chart just breaks that, do what they can to increase our workforce and really, truly try to make it a place where our students are able to see themselves in their educators. So, we are currently enjoying a three-year trend right now of double-digit growth in our new licensed hires, in terms of people of color that are being hired. The overall percentage, again, of licensed staff has increased again to twelve point six percent, and then twenty-nine percent of these hires for this new period were persons of color. How does that look across our students, our teachers, and administrators? Again, while we just want to celebrate that, we still have a long way to go. While we celebrate the diversity in our student population, that diversity is still a challenge in our actual workforce, and we are still chipping away at that. I've once heard, when you take a big district like ours and you're trying to make change, it's like turning a battleship all the way around. It's incremental changes over time that are going to continue to provide us with results that we can continue to be proud of. With that, I would like to turn it back over With that, I would like to turn it back over to Carrie Bev to talk a little bit about how we're looking to hire people to increase this diversity.
Thank you. This leads us to our strategies for recruitment and what we'll be sharing with you in our review, our successes, and what we believe are continued opportunities. This year, we hired a hundred and twenty-four point zero F T E in teaching staff for our district. As we mentioned earlier, over twenty-one percent of this class were educators of color. Some of the highlights in this slide show that nearly sixty percent of the two thousand twenty-two new hire class is at the elementary level. Almost fifty-four percent have three years or less experience, and more than sixty-five percent of this recruitment class have an advanced degree, which is at least a master's degree. We'd like to thank the following teams for a successful onboarding of this new hire class. Those teams include professional learning, curriculum and instruction, technology, special education, benefits, both unions and H R. It would not have been possible without your collaboration. We recognize that a multifaceted approach is necessary to increase overall diversity in our workforce. The data trends continue to show an overall decrease in the number of candidates not only entering the profession, but in also completing the programs, as Lewis just mentioned. So we continue to look at ways to both attract new candidates and create our own. We're intentional in our hiring process, and this means that we are posting earlier with aggressive interview timelines while keeping a critical eye towards candidates who will thrive in a diverse setting. We're identifying candidates that meet our students' needs and excel in an ability to make connections in and outside the classroom. We've implemented systemic changes, including every school has an interview team that is itself diverse to allow for multiple viewpoints to be expressed. We also have guided our hiring teams to include equity and inclusion questions at every round of interviews and provide training to the teams to look for candidates that are the best fit for the school and for our students. We also have plans to more systemically review our retention practices. Mentoring is a key component of our retention strategy, and one aspect of that mentoring comes in the form of our affinity groups. These groups connect around common beliefs, goals, interests, and values. For example, some of our affinity groups include Latinx educators, men who teach, LGBTQ plus pride and allyship, those are just a few. We're also implementing strategies to reach out and support educators earlier in the process. This includes university outreach, onsite support through networking events, and student-teacher open houses, and our very own Grow Your Own Teacher program. We connected with over three hundred candidates at scheduled job fairs this past year. We successfully ran a networking event for student-teachers, which had over a hundred participants. We shared with them our vision and our current opportunities. And they had the opportunity to have their resumes reviewed. They were able to ask candid questions of our administrators and teachers and practice interviewing while at this event. The feedback that we received was overwhelmingly positive, and this allowed us to make connections early. The increase in onsite recruitment events this past year was promising. However, the lingering effects of the pandemic had an impact on turnout at some. So, for example, the day before one of our events, the university went remote due to an increase in positive cases, which meant that participation at the fair was low. We also recognized that more districts from Illinois are expanding their reach outside the state because of the decreasing numbers in the pipeline, and we experienced direct competition from local districts in some of these spaces for the first time. We continue to build our relationships with H B C U's and visited two in the spring. We're grateful to the university partners and leaders who help support us in these recruitment efforts. Whether our recruitment took us to places near or far, we were always excited when familiar faces visited us at these events. For the two thousand twenty-two new hire class, we have seventeen familiar faces and would like to again warmly welcome back our two oh four alumni. These seventeen join a cohort of over two hundred current two oh four alumni and our staff who are actively engaged in supporting our Grow Your Own Teachers program. Our teachers shared over one thousand stories of why they became an educator. We'd like to highlight for you again our Grow Your Own Teacher program. The premise of the Grow Your Own Teacher program focuses on increased exposure to the teaching profession with the intent to recruit and hire our own students to work as future teachers in District two oh four. It's hard to believe that what we've accomplished was done in just one year. It was overwhelmingly successful, and as much as we'd like to gush about it, we'll let the students tell you in their own words.
I love being in the, like, the school setting, and I have found the passion that I fit in best as a middle school teacher. So, the opportunity I have gotten to be in the classroom as much as possible is like my favorite thing ever.
It's just been really cool to be able to, like, talk to people who are in their profession and like, in all different areas, because I've talked to, like, an elementary gym teacher. I've talked to multiple high school math teachers, a middle school English teacher, and just seeing the different perspectives.
And I'm sure doing observations, which I really enjoyed. I got to, like, talk to the kids and connect. It's like a firsthand experience, I can't really get anywhere else, you know?
I think something that surprised me the most is all the planning that the teachers had to do before class started and just talking about what's the next steps for these kids? How are we involving them in class, and what are we doing?
If you're thinking about becoming a teacher, I would definitely recommend this program. Like, it shows you the ins, outs, like, literally everything, interacting with students, teachers, like, meetings. So this program has definitely, like, showed me that, like, this is really what I love to do, and this is what I'm going to pursue in the future, and it's the career that, like, is me, like, this is who I am.
Do it. If you like kids, and especially like with high school, if they do like the Early Childhood Teaching Lab that I'm a part of, like, I feel like it really just solidified that, like, I wanted to do this.
Honestly, I do plan on coming back to two oh four because I love Gomber. Like, my dream would be probably go around other schools first than this or two oh four, but my dream would be like ending my teaching career at Gomber where I started.
So the slide that's on display now represents the start and end caps of the two thousand twenty-two program. The "I Became an Educator Because" poster that you see is just one example of ways our teachers shared with our students how personal teaching is. The picture is from the high school culminating event in the spring. Through the RIASEC World of Work Program, we're introducing teaching as a profession to our elementary students. At the middle school, we launched the Teachers of Tomorrow After-School Club. We had close to a hundred participants and were able to provide opportunities to learn more about what a teacher does in and out of the classroom, to hear from all types of education professionals, including a social worker, an athletic director, a technology teacher, L M C director, speech pathologist, and the superintendent. And visit the high school that they'll be attending to get exposure to the high school Grow Your Own Teacher cohort. At the high school, we had almost a hundred students participate in the program. They had the opportunity to participate in four full-day teacher observations, one at each level and one of their choice of levels. After each observation, students were given the opportunity to reflect and collaborate with their peers. As you heard, this type of experience at their age isn't available in other types of careers. And for some, solidified their career choice. We've heard numerous stories about additional opportunities that this experience has created for our high schoolers, such as tutoring and mentorship.
So as Carrie talked about, really, that first year was well above our, what our goals were. It's important to really talk about that it's not just one person or a team of people, but it's an entire committee that's been hard at work since the beginning and also spent some work this summer. This committee is made up of administrators, teachers, collaboration with our union presidents, and really, the focus has just been, what can we do to increase and get kids excited about just wanting to be an educator? What you see up there is really just a schematic of what that leadership team has looked like. So for Institute Day this year, our first year, we really, as Carrie Bev showed, we encouraged our educators to just share their personal story. Why did they become an educator? That story was shared not just with colleagues, but ultimately with students, and it was on display everywhere. This year, we said, you know what, let's hear from the students themselves. And so, we conducted a student panel who were able to not only share a little bit about their experience, but they also identified at Institute Day a teacher who personally inspired them in our district to go into education. Lots of tears that day, I think, on both sides, because they were surprised. I'm not sure if they've forgiven me yet, but at least they are all here. And with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to these amazing future educators. Maya Razak from Niqua Valley, Siri Nyakanti from Matia Valley, and Alishba Basit from Wabanzie Valley. These future educators are going to each share with you a little bit about their experience in the program, what they hope to do when they leave, and also covering a little bit about just their time and efforts in the program. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Maya, who's going to tell us a little bit about how she's looking forward to year two and then how that's going to prepare her for starting her freshman year in college next year. So Maya?
Hi, my name's Maya Razak.
Hi, my name's Maya Razak. I'm a senior at Niqua Valley, and as I approach my final year at Niqua Valley, this program has not only prepared me to continue on to the path of education, but give me the confidence to go into college knowing that I am following my passion into becoming a teacher. I have been fortunate enough to have many years with different teachers influence me throughout my life and throughout this program. Grow Your Own Teachers has given me the opportunity to have so many different teachers to look up to and to reach out to if I have any other questions to ask. This program has introduced me to many new teachers over the past year, and you are not only here to help guide me through the right path into teaching, they're also here to answer any questions I may have in the process. This program has introduced me to a new perspective of what being a teacher is really like. I have gotten to experience many different classroom and teaching styles, which I hope to bring with me as I become a teacher in the future. I'm excited to build the relationships with my future students based on ones I've seen in the classroom or the ones that the teachers have created with me. And I am more than excited to move forward onto the education major and possibly be hired back into the district.
That's awesome, Maya, thank you for sharing that. So Siri, can you tell us what an average day looks like? Our board president, she's been able to actually substitute teach in the classroom. So she knows what an average day is from the teaching standpoint. What has it been like for you just being a member of this program in these, participating in year one?
Yeah, so during an average observation last year, I was able to shadow a teacher through three main parts of their day, their prep period, the actual lessons they taught, and even their lunch. And through this, I got to experience just how important each part of that day was, how their prep time directly helped their lesson go smoothly, and even how time at lunch helped build connections with coworkers and bring that specific department even closer. So a typical observation overall meant getting to experience not just the structure of the day, but see exactly how what goes on behind the classroom affects the kind of class that we students attend each day. Last year, I had the chance to attend two full-day observations at the middle school and elementary level, as well as half a day at the high school. And so, I'll just share a couple of takeaways that I found with each of those observations. At the middle school level, I was able to shadow a teacher who had three periods in a row covering the same lesson. And for me, it was really nice to see how, even though it was the same content, each class had a different personality that the teacher would adjust their style to and would even use what they learned from the previous period to increase how efficient their class was in the current one. And elementary school was a bit different because I shadowed just one teacher with the same group of students the whole day. So I was able to shadow first grade and see how from the moment a student walks in to the way the classroom is set up, just how much elementary teachers, especially for their younger kids, make an effort to establish a routine in their class, hone those foundational skills, and build a connection with their students by learning how each of them learn. Finally, my last observation was at the high school level, where I picked a specific subject I was interested in. So even though it was just half a day, I had the chance to shadow a different math and science teacher for each period I was there. So it was really nice to experience and observe such a variety of teaching styles all in one day. But overall, for the most part, a day of observation means having the chance to talk with the teacher, really gain insight into the thought that goes behind a class. Depending on the grade level, this may also involve a little more hands-on assistance, like helping answer questions in class. But with so much to observe and take in, it was really helpful to have a district provided notebook to take notes in, as ultimately, each of these shadowing days are meant to expose us to different facets of teaching at different levels. And I can say that I really learned a lot from the experience.
That's awesome, Siri. Thank you for highlighting those notebooks, I think they are pretty cool. All right, Alishba, what are you looking forward to the most as you start in year two?
What I'm looking forward to the most this second year is that we have more of an opportunity to go into the classes that we want to teach in and have a little bit more independence and freedom. Last year, we were required to go to every grade level, which was nice, and to see how different each grade levels are and which ones fit you and which ones you most definitely did not want to go to. For example, when I went to observe a high school class, it felt like I was just in class again. But for people who wanted to be in high school again, it could have been more interesting if they had those questions prepared of what they wanted to know for the teacher. But this year, since we get to choose which grade level we want to and stay there for all, for observations, we'll make it more fun as we will have the questions we want to ask and enjoy the overall experience. We will also be going to the same teacher all four days, so we'll be able to make connections and always go back to that teacher and ask questions from, like, the previous time we went. Sorry. Another thing is building a connection and while seeing them more often will just allow you to be more comfortable with them, and even like, if you want, you can email them too. And going to the same teacher will also let you see their different teaching styles depending on what they're teaching that day. If one day they're teaching, like, more science on the day that you go, you can see how they teach science compared to like math on a different observation day. Also, another good part of this year is that we get a bit more freedom as we're able to drive to the school by ourselves. This allows us to be less stressed when, because we don't have to worry about finding where we need to leave from with all the other students, and we can kind of go once we're ready. In the end, I think this year will be a lot more fun as now everything is not freshly new, meaning we know what to expect, but at the same time, it will not be the same thing all over again.
That's awesome. Thank you all so much for sharing some of those observations. We are really looking forward to having them back in our district, as you can hear. And speaking of obviously having them in our district, we want to make sure that this year two is even more successful than year one. And, you know, we kicked off, we had a kickoff event with, we had about seven or eight colleges and universities to start to kick things off, and we had over ninety students signups. This year, we are actually have close, just over a hundred and thirty students signups. I'm losing more of my hair when I first heard about this number. It is a great challenge for us, and we're really looking forward to just making year two even better than year one. Now, with that being said, I'm going to turn back over to Carrie to talk about how we're going to continue to retain some of our best teachers.
And I wish we could keep talking about the Grow Your Own Program
I do too.
and the excitement that we have been able to develop with the students in the district for this program. I'm hopeful that we'll be bringing these students back to the district after they complete their education programs. But I am going to talk to you a little bit about staff retention here. We understand that there are a number of reasons that staff decide to pursue employment elsewhere. But we also know that establishing a solid relationship at the time of hire improves retention, therefore reducing the costs associated with recruitment and hiring. Our teacher retention rate of ninety-five percent compared to the state average of eighty-five point nine is a source of pride for us. Our teacher retention rate of ninety-five percent compared to the state average of eighty-five point nine is a source of pride for us. We've also retained ninety-seven percent of our excellent rated teachers and continue to meet our board goal. As you can see on this next slide, our turnover is typical. Of the hundred and ninety-eight point three FTE who left the district, a hundred and four point one were licensed staff, which is five percent of this group. Of the hundred and four point one FTE, thirty point seven percent or less than one-third were non-tenured. We're also going to talk to you a little bit about our exit survey. We continue to build value in our exit survey and our response rate reflects this. We have increased our responses over the previous year. Again, this was primarily teachers who responded to the survey. The highest number of respondents were at the elementary and early childhood level, but all who responded provided valuable feedback to us. This slide represents the top reasons for staff exiting. Respondents could identify multiple reasons in this question, but we wanted to point out a stark increase in the number who responded their, their exit was for personal or health reasons. That's highlighted on the slide here. As a reminder, these percentages are totals of all the respondents and all types of positions. What's most encouraging on this slide is that eighty percent of the respondents would recommend District 204 as a place to work. We're very proud of the service of our staff and recognized four hundred and nineteen individuals this year. We formally recognize teaching service of twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and thirty-five years of service during our opening day ceremony.
So what are we going to continue to focus on? Some of these things we've talked about before, some of these are brand new and some are going to be developing. Our recognition programs are, we want to continue to expand. The more we can recognize people for their achievements in our district, we know that that just helps maintain that retention rate that we shared earlier. We have work to do to continue to diversify our staff and we will continue to work towards a workforce that is diverse in many ways. Today, we just highlighted race and ethnicity, but we know that diversity reflects a lot of different areas. And so we want to continue to keep our, our lens focused on all of that. We also would like to start to look at developing what is an Indian Prairie 204 teacher, similar to the process we did for an Indian Prairie Portrait of a Graduate that we worked with the community years ago. We'd like to, we think we can come up with some similar critical attributes that are going to be important for educators who we feel are going to be successful in our district. We've talked a little bit about the heavy lifting we're, we're going to have to do for year two and year three of our Grow Your Own program. And then again, and probably one of the most important things is we have to maintain a very visible and high-level support for all of our staff, not just in terms of programming and offerings, but also just outreach. We're going to be, as you saw in the strategic plan, HR is expanding to really get in the buildings and be at the forefront of, of teacher conversation and, and making sure that we're visible and supporting all of our staff. That was a lot. We threw a lot at you. Probably one of the reasons why Dr. Tally only lets us come once a year. So that being said, we'd love to hear what questions you have about everything we've talked about and our students are going to remain because they enjoy taking questions as well.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dumming, you want to start?
Certainly. Thank you so much. I just first have to say right off the bat how impressed I am with our students here. I can only smile while you were, each of you were speaking because I love to see an opportunity for you to investigate an area that you think you want to do and hopefully you will make that decision, but that, that it's right for you. But regardless, it's so fantastic for our district to offer such an intense chance for you to really investigate a passion that you have right now. So thank you so much for sharing the things that you, that you had to share. One of the things, and any of you can answer this, I hope that we provide an opportunity for our students to share things that they think were really, that go really well with their first year as well as maybe different opportunities for us to improve next year. Were there any, any of you can answer, were there any things that any of you saw that you suggested that we could do a little bit better as far as the initiative was?
Don't be shy. We, we actually heard, asked this question. We heard, we heard a lot, which was great, so.
I actually enjoy that this year we get to pick one teacher to focus on for the four observations. I know a couple of students that did the program last year that as a year two, they decided they didn't want to do the program because you had to pick one teacher. And it wasn't really up to them because it was year two, then we wanted to open up, they could be able to pick your own teacher. And I enjoy that because that would give me more class time and hopefully like maybe by the fourth time I go in, I can write my own lesson plan, maybe teach a lesson. So I feel like that opens up an opportunity for me, especially as a senior going in as a freshman next year to college, that this all introduced me really well into education.
Fantastic.
I agree with Maya. I'm a junior right now, so I'm excited to do year two and eventually year three. I like how each year is different and it's kind of building upon what you learned in the previous year. And for me, as I shared, year two or year one was mostly like you're observing and you're like taking notes. You're just taking all of these things that you are noticing with each level. And I'm excited to apply some of the things that I've seen teachers do with year two.
Fantastic.
Also, I really like year two this year. One thing about year one is there were, the first observation and the second observation was half a day, which was nice with the second half of the day of like meeting all together. But the one con about it is that we didn't really, that school we observed, we didn't get to stay there the whole time if we wanted to. So it was kind of like a missed opportunity that we weren't able to stay there the whole day.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much again. I loved hearing everything you had to share. I have just, I'll just take a couple, just a couple of questions for you guys. On slides, slide seven. Slide seven, I just wanted to go back and I really appreciate the fact that we've talked a lot about the fact that we have the lowest percentage of administrators per students out of any of our comparable schools, but the fact again that we did not increase any administrative positions this year. No new positions, there were some that we backfilled. But I just really appreciate the fact that we are staying true to being really conscious about our resources and how we expend that expenditure. So I really did want to just commend the, the administration for ensuring that we continue to focus where we really know that we need to. It's so important and those are the personnel that are interacting with our students. And then a quick question on slide eight. You showed some of the hard to fill and I just wondered, where do our, what about our just regular teachers that are not in the special education teachers, but teachers that are in our classrooms outside of special education? I guess I'll say where, how do we stand as far as those, as far as those numbers are concerned?
Yeah, sure. Carrie, do you want to take this?
Sure. Well, we are very fortunate in that we started the school year fully staffed in our classroom positions. Generally, in the areas of math and science, technology, engineering tend to be the harder to fill content area classes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, President Donovan.
Ms. Grover, I wanted to thank you three to come out and provide your feedback. Your feedback is so important in growing a program as you know what are the good parts and what are the parts you need to improve upon. One of the things, I, I love that how you were thinking of year three. The other thing I was thinking, it'd be great if they could, we have Teacher Institute Day. Perhaps we could allow the students to come to those later on, maybe the third year. It's kind of like high school when you keep on expanding upon it. The one, I also want to mention how great our teacher retention rate is. I think it's, it's because we cultivate this atmosphere of welcoming. We see it with the students. They're so enthused. We saw it where that student said she wants to go back to her homeschool in Gomber and it continues with the affinity groups. We, a lot of us attended the welcome, the teacher welcoming ceremony. It was great. The enthusiasm that was there, I wanted to join. So it was, it was really great. I guess the one question I have is because some of these students may go to another state for college. Is a license, what is the reciprocity process? If you, if you go to a college elsewhere and then you want to come teach here?
Yeah, Illinois has actually really stepped up in this that once you are, as long as you meet the credentialing requirements in that state, Illinois will, will accept it. That's been a change over the years and Carrie probably knows how long ago that was, that changed, but it's something that's been pushed for and they have really just at this point. So if you get your degree, your license in Maryland and you come here, we will recognize it.
And is that usually after you graduate, you get your license?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Yeah, great question. So hopefully someone's watching in Maryland. You never know. It's a Monday night.
It's very possible. You don't, it's very possible.
I do have a niece in Maryland, so.
Mr. Krubis.
Do they, do they teach doing board presentations in school? Because you guys knocked it out of the park. I really appreciate it. I, I think you should come back and do board, more board presentations. So you know, you stay late and, and you have to, you know, deal with the microphones and you got to deal with the cameras and you guys really knocked it out of the park. So I appreciate that. You know, you, you talk about, and it's really in any profession. You talk about, you know, this is going to be my job and then you see all the other stuff you end up doing and okay, I'm going to expand my skills way beyond what I'm, I'm learning in the classroom. And it's literally, you're doing more than in the classroom here, so thanks. I want to say a lot about the, the Grow Your Own program. You know, I'm a big fan of alum, so you know, come back to the district and help us out. That'd be great. You look at the demographics of the statewide candidate pool and it's mathematically impossible for us to really move the needle to, if we want to match our student body with our teachers. But the Grow Your Own program offers a way for us to potentially move it better in our direction, change the odds, so to speak, because our student demographics don't reflect the state's demographics. So the Grow Your Own program is very exciting. You know, you guys know our schools. You know some of our history. You can bring that to, you know, to the next generation. And that brings us to, you know, slide fourteen where we are hitting, you know, an aging, you know, workforce. We're losing a lot of institutional knowledge. And you've, you know, and so passing on some of those stories, those traditions, you know, what happened five years ago, it's important. And one of the ways to do that is to, is well, when I was a student, we did this. And little things like that are, help us retain some of that institutional knowledge. And so it, it works both ways. You know, we tried this and it didn't work. Let's not do it again. Or, you know, we tried this and it worked and that's why we should keep it. So that institutional knowledge is important. And then reflecting on what Ms. Grover talked about with slide thirty-seven and the retention. None of this works if you are successful on a hire and then you can't retain them. So you have to be able to retain them. And a ninety-five percent retention rate speaks volumes about the work that's going on, about the culture in our workforce. I know there's a private industry that would, would welcome a retention rate like that. That is very impressive. And then I want to reiterate on P, on slide nineteen that talks about, although we do talk about demographics, we still want to hire the best, most highly qualified candidates. That's, 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 that's the most important thing. And we want to look at it through the lens of the demographics, but we have to be hiring the best, most highly qualified candidates. And what better qualified candidates are the ones that have learned here? So, thanks.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you for, for this wonderful presentation. You know, I think what this forty-two slide deck presentation allowed us to appreciate were, were the multiple balls that you're juggling, right? Which my, my co-board members have mentioned about maintaining current staff at, at the stellar, giving it an A at ninety-five percent, which is amazing. Number two, addressing your traditional recruiting methods with a decrease in supply of teachers, right? And what, what I was impressed with was what you presented in slide twenty-three. Kind of the tremendous efforts you are taking to be ahead of the game, to aggressively pursue our future educators and making thoughtful, intentional uses of your time and resources to try to get us to a place where our teachers reflect the diversity of our district, which we all know is very important and, and valuable. Outside of these efforts and the, the context you provided for us to understand why this is so challenging, are there any other limitations that are, are exacerbating the situation that you, you see being loosened or getting worse? That's a, that's a large question, but.
Yeah, no, if we got another hour. I will just say this, going back to the earlier comment about this workplace environment has changed and I see some signs that it's changed in a more permanent basis. How people look at work is really different now. How we can then, we are now competing, I believe, against this idea of work in person. And that's, I, I think that's also a coming challenge just because it, it potentially limits then people who might be drawn to our profession but are also now being drawn to other ways to make a living that at this moment in time do, really don't exist. If you're going to teach students, we've, you know, we've seen the data. It's important for them to be in person in school. And I, I think one of the challenges we're seeing is people have, are looking at how they are raising a family and being available to their family and are they able to do some of those things traditionally now without being in person? And so I, that's a challenge. Carrie, I know we've talked a lot about this. What am I forgetting?
No, I think certainly in our department and across the district with administration, we're looking at ways to be efficient with our time and the resources that we have available, some of the, the tools that we're using to really maximize our efforts in recruitment. Like you said, we're, we're trying to get the best bang for our buck here. And, and it's been really a collaborative effort across administration to support that.
Great, thank you. The last part of my questions are with regard to grow, with the Grow Your Own program. Is this unique to District 204? As you're looking and seeing other districts trying to make sense of this challenging issue, how do we stand in comparison?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. You know, I'll say we believe that we're very unique in, in what we're doing with the number of students that are involved. I know in, in working with our IPEA president, Katie Pop, we've had some opportunities for some national, and visit our program. We know that our program has been mentioned on the. We know that our program has been mentioned on the statewide stage regarding Educators Rising Program, which is a national program that's also dedicated to the same goals, same beliefs and same strategies. So, you know, people are taking notice. We've also been able to present both at our state conference and are going to be presenting at a nationwide conference on our program and our recruiting efforts. So we're just going to, you know, we not only believe in the uniqueness and success of our program, but we want to be able to share what we're doing and learn what other people are doing as well. But I, I think there's a number of ways in which our program distinguishes itself from others, but that being said, there's some great things that are going on out there that I've seen firsthand. And trying to, how best we can incorporate that into, I think our focus has really been on just getting a great passion for this. Ultimately, we want all of them to come here, but long-term, as long as they're going into education, we're going to be okay. But yes, we, we really want to attract the best and brightest to come right back here to our district.
That's great. I, I applaud you for the, for the vision to, to start this program and to nurture and develop it. My final question, how are we going to ensure to hire these young ladies? What are we doing after they graduate? What, is there a part of that to the program?
Yes, some of those committees that we had up there, we've got people that are working on alumni and how to make sure that we're staying in contact with not only them when they graduate, but even people who have, we, we already know are in school right now and are working to become educators. I can't take credit for any of this program. We've got some great people in our district who have done all the heavy lifting up here. And I'm not going to name all names because I'm going to forget someone, but we've just got an amazing team of people who have made this program what it is. And so just kudos to all of our teachers and staff and administrators who have, who have really stepped up. But yes, plans are underway to, to maintain and make sure that they come back.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Rising.
Slide 37, whichever everybody went to, but I want to do that again. I think I know the answer to this question, but I want to ask it anyway. And I, I know scenarios are different, but in education, do we typically see more people leaving the field earlier on in their career versus later on in their career?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I'm not saying that's why we are seeing higher retention rates because we definitely have an, an aging staff. But these numbers are just phenomenal. I mean, you know, and, and I know this is all staff, right? But I, I went back and looked at 2014 when the, the state of Illinois, I, I know we've been tracking retention for our staffing far longer than that. I went back to look at 2014 when the state first started tracking certified teacher staff retention. And we've improved our retention since 2014 by five percentage points, which is pretty incredible. I, I mean, that says a lot about our district. So we had more teacher turnover in 2014 than we do today, which is crazy. And a kudos to our HR department and, 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 and our, you know, Certified Association, Classified Association and our non-bargaining staff. Also ironically, I know we compare ourselves to state average, but I think it warrants to be said that we also have better retention than a district we often compare ourselves to that is very close. So I, that's all I will say. So, and then, then I looked at private schools versus public schools. And I found the employee turnover in private schools is twice as much in private schools than it is public schools. So I, I think we should be extremely proud of what we're doing. Yes, we do have a lot of work to still, that still needs to be done. But I'm very encouraged by the Grow Your Own program. Oh, and I didn't thank the students too. Thank you guys for, for being here and being here kind of late. Also, thank you for being there on the first day when they did the teacher awards and everything. I was waiting for Lewis to pull somebody out of the, the back again for you guys. But, you know, thank you for being here and sharing what the program has meant to you. Slide 42, the last slide. The profile development of an Indian Prairie 204 teacher. I'm assuming that is the portrait of a teacher or portrait of an educator, much like we did with a portrait of a graduate in the district?
Yes.
Okay. Are, are we going to be start doing that work soon or? I know we, we, because we're not doing anything, so we've got so much time, but.
Dr. Lee has it on his list.
Okay.
It's in the strategic plan, which is a five-year plan, right?
It will be done by the end of this year. It'll be start.
And then, just one last thing. Thank you, you guys. But I, I just wanted to send a thank you to our teachers, our classified staff, our non-bargaining staff because the last two years have been rough on students as well as staff. And if you, if you saw the surveys of staff a year ago, over 25% were thinking of leaving education. So I, I just wanted to send a thank you to our educators, our classified staff, our non-bargaining staff that have stayed with it and stuck with us and, you know, fought with us to, to get things back to normal. And not only do I appreciate it, I'm sure the board appreciates it, but, you know, it, especially our students and, and what it has meant to them to have that consistency. And because that's what matters the most, is our students. So, thank you for all the work.
So I think being a teacher, the profession of teaching is the only profession I can think of that each and every day, your words and actions have a possibility of making a tremendous impact on a student. I think of my past and I remember teachers, I remember their words, I remember my biology teacher and I'm old, okay? And it's just an amazing opportunity to have that in front of you. And I really truly hope that you all continue to pursue that. I was very happy to see our district rated number 33 in the state. I didn't know the data about being the only public school in the top 50 because that's extremely helpful for retention and for hiring because people want to stay at a, a district that is a good place to work and nurtures our staff and students and helps our community. So I think that was very important for us to achieve and look forward to continuing that pattern in the future. The Grow Your Own program, I mean, I think we've all just been so pleased and happy with having that in place and the opportunities it provides with the students. And you mentioned me substituting, so I have subbed at every level, I think, except middle school, which I will be doing on Thursday. So I do have a question for the women here. So now that you've gone through and tried the four different, or three different levels and selected your fourth, have you, do you have a favorite one that you like and why? Like middle school, high school, elementary?
Before I went into the program, I was involved in the F E A and Ed Rising. I'm now like one of the leaders on the board of F E A. So I knew that I wanted to go into middle school and I wanted to go into middle school math. So when I went into grow your own teacher, I thought, oh, this should give me more classroom type. And when you had, when you were given, you have to go to every level, I kind of was a little disappointed. Because I was like, I don't want to spend my day with some elementary schoolers. But at the end, I was glad because I liked being able to see my perspective of a teacher from each grade, each school level, everything like that. And it just clarified that I do want to continue going into middle school math. And it's because I feel that middle school is when there's the big change. But for every student, you're going from elementary school to middle school and then the transition from middle school to high school, that, that's when you have one of the biggest impacts on the student. And I feel like the teacher I had in middle school gave me the biggest impact I had.
For me, going into this program and coming out, I want to, I'm more interested in the high school level, specifically math or science. And I think for me, high school is just really the time where you kind of focus. For me, the importance of the teacher kind of comes when you're able to explain something and change someone's mind about what they're interested in. So maybe they went in thinking like, you know, I don't particularly like math, but it was really because they didn't understand it. And when you have that teacher that just explains it in that right way, it can really change your mind and outlook on what you think you're capable of doing. And I kind of really believe in that and helping other people see that they're capable of doing things that they didn't really imagine themselves to do in the beginning. And I do really feel like going to the different grade levels showed me a new perspective on elementary and middle school because I kind of, it's been a long time since I walked into an elementary school. And seeing it from, I went to in first grade and just seeing how much there was the teachers doing, like building those skills, especially coming off of COVID. It was really humbling to see how much of an effort they make for those students. And I'm really glad I had the opportunity to see that and appreciate how every level has its own unique thing.
So after the program, I was more sure on being an elementary teacher because before I was kind of like, like on the fence. But I really wanted to be an elementary teacher because just like observing and made it seem even more exciting just being able to help the students. And this is kind of like their first years in school, their foundation at school. So just making them more comfortable and happier to be in school would be nice.
Very nice. Did you pick these women because of that distribution?
I'm just going to tell you, and I have to say their names, Rachel Bostick and Cluckston, Todd Mertz and Lynn Baranek. They are the high school coordinators that selected them and have just been the main vehicle for this program at the high school level. They, I think you heard from Ann last year, and I don't know if they're watching tonight, but really just true, a lot of hard work and dedication on, on them just to make this what it is.
I think many of the board members attended, attended the institute day and you did a fantastic job representing your ideas and thoughts and outlook. And we really appreciate that. I love the fact that, I think it was Ava Bonzi, the teacher that won the TV, was sitting right behind us. And she was a brand-new teacher, like that was her first week or first day or whatever. I'm like, oh my gosh, what an introduction to being a teacher, huh? Was she? Yeah, I was like, wow, that was super exciting. And I'm sure that was extremely memorable for her. The teaching profession is great. I win TVs.
Also retention rates, huh?
So I, I think that there's a lot of work in front of us with the aging of our staff and the number of people going into the teaching profession. It's a highly respected, I mean, the teachers, they rated the school super high, but then when asked, they're like, I don't want my child to be a teacher. It's like, okay. They need, you know, it is a respected profession that, again, makes a difference in people's lives. So I hope that you continue and I hope to see you back here as a hire in the future. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. Our last agenda item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. And Mr. Rising, you went to the Lend meeting for me.
I did. Went to the Lend meeting, which is our legislative network group for DuPage County School Districts. Dr. Tally joined me there, although I think he usually goes, so he didn't join me. I joined him, really. And Matt Shipley was there as well. A lot of talk around legislative things. There was like 12 slides, so I'm only just going to summarize three things. But three things we should be aware of. TIF reform, they're looking at and it could come up in veto session, something that's being presented by Senator Gillespie. So that's something to keep an eye on. Hopefully that works to our favor. They are looking at student assessments, basically to improve on the reporting and so we can get it quicker in a timely manner. And they're also looking at the frequency of the assessments for our students, so more to come on that. And then the last thing, as Mr. Krubus predicted about six or eight months ago, was the evidence-based funding. ISBE and their general counsel, they're looking at if evidence-based funding should be reconfigured in the way they calculate things. I think that should be very concerning to us since we have waited patiently. It is a tier-two district. That if they change that, that could negatively impact us when we've been waiting patiently.
Meaning that they would reconfigure so potentially Chicago would become a tier-one district again?
I'm not going to make any assumptions, but what I, what I will say is that they are looking at the, how the poverty rate is calculated. Now, the poverty rate is already calculated in the evidence-based funding formula. So they are looking to see how they could recalculate it again. And, and I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with that because that should be a focus as our students that are living in poverty because we know that can and does impact the, the equity gap and the achievement gap. But it just seems a little interesting to me. So the timeline is basically from October to December, they're going to be looking at developing a new plan for evidence-based funding. January to February, they're going to make revisions based on feedback. March, they will finalize the plan of how the evidence-based funding will look. And by May, they will fully implement it for the fiscal year '24. So we need to keep engaged and aware of what's going on. And, and I'll send you all these slides that I received at the Lend meeting. I probably talked longer than the slides, slides were themselves, but I thought it was good to give you a background on everything. Do you have a question?
Yeah, by they, by they did you mean ISBE?
Yeah, ISBE and I A S B, I A S, ISBE will impact our legislators who will ultimately have to make the decision, right? So.
And in terms of our feedback, what does that process look like? Like when, when do we get to provide our feedback?
I would say early and often. You know, as they, as they start to develop the plan, I think we need to keep our eyes open on it and talk to our local legislators of what, how, and how that impacts us. Because remember, we're, we're one of the few tier-two districts in DuPage County. And will, for that matter. But, you know, as it gets to December and the holidays, they're kind of going to be tuning out. And then by January, February, they're going to be looking at, you know, revisions based on feedback. So I would say towards, between basically now and the end of the year, we need to keep engaged.
Sorry, last question. How do we have, in, in the slides, do we have something to go off of to know where it may be heading so that way we can? Like what do, what do we speak to?
Justin monitors the ISBE meetings.
So we don't, because how do you speak to our local legislators without knowing the, what might be presented, correct?
And usually they don't do those calculations until well after. So we don't even know how it impacts us sometimes until well after the fact.
So I just want to, and, and I know Mr. Krubus wants to say something as well. So I just wanna, and, and I know, uh, Mr. Carubus wants to say something as well. The, the great thing about Lend is Peg and Jen are very much in tune with what's happening. And what they do is they give me a call, they'll talk to Matt Shipley, our Chief School Business Officer. They'll ask us, here's what we know is maybe coming down the road. What are your thoughts about it? And then they will go to bat for us, um, to speak to the legislators. But then I know Mr. Carubus has mentioned about the fact of maybe necessary for us to go to Springfield at some point in time to have that conversation. So there's a multi-pronged approach to handling this.
Right. So the, the point that I think both of you are making is, at some point, the interests of the district and the interests of Lend diverge. Where we need to advocate solely for our interest on the formula because we are the only tier-two district in DuPage County. So at some point, we are rowing in the same direction, and at some point, we need to go off-script. Some of the variables that they are considering, that Mark alluded to, would be changing, it's not just poverty, but it's concentrations of poverty. So the more, more poverty you have, the more funding you, you might need. And so you could see where there's a logical reason for that. But then the question is, you know, the multiplier, and how much of a concentration do you put on that? And, and, and then, what, since you weren't all involved in this the first time, what typically happens is they're gonna propose a formula, and then we'll have, we'll be able to comment on the formula on these things like the concentration of poverty, which are, which will be some of the changes and deltas. They'll take things out of the formula, they'll put things into the formula. But then you won't know, how does that impact me numbers-wise? Like, do the math. And so they'll put together a big spreadsheet with, this is how each of the districts are affected across the state. And then you could say, aha, that's gonna hurt me, that's gonna, that's gonna help me. So then, through that process, you'll, you'll be able to, um, talk to your local legislatures and then deal with the Education Committee and down in Springfield, which would, they'll be, end up being like six or twelve players down there that we might wanna lobby on our own. Uh, the, it is, this is one of the reasons why it's important to have relationships with your local legislatures. So, um, when the interests of the district, it, it, we need to grow beyond just focusing on hiring, retaining teachers. We need to, to make sure that we have, you know, revenue to do that. We need to make sure we defend our revenue or get more revenue to do that. So that's where the advocacy is important.
Yeah, I, I would share. It's like, um, you know, when we looked at the Esser fun, funds, I mean, we basically got pennies compared to everybody else getting dollars, tens, hundreds, or whatever. And it was all because of a formula that was created federally. And, uh, it, when, whatever that formula, the way it was structured, just didn't pick up our needs in our district. And so that's a big concern to me, and, uh, Lend has, um, been a tremendous advocate for us. But I also worry that in this case, we're like, we're like the only, um, district in, um, the DuPage area that is sitting in tier-two with funding needs. And the other people are, it's not gonna be an issue for them unless they perceive it's gonna hurt them somehow. So, um, I know I've raised this to Jen like months ago when you brought up that you were hearing that this was gonna happen, and I brought that to her. She knows that we're concerned, but in their realm of everything that they are looking at and care about, do they care about Two-O-Fours gonna possibly get less money because they changed the formula here? So, yeah. We have to, we, we're gonna be, have to be active ourselves.
And the manner in which they do it, as we saw even with Esser Funding, is, is very, you know, determines on what happens, where we fall because there, as we saw, there are districts that are, you know, different tiers than we are that still receive more Esser Funding because of how they stipulated those poverty rates that, you know, the, um, uh, concentration, thank you. So, um, so, yeah, so it, there may be, as, as you've said, and, and, um, Justin, that this may be an area where we're, we need to really make sure that we're, um, advocating for ourselves.
Okay, anything else? I know we're, Scrover is working on our presentation for the, um, conference, the I A S B conference, and we're looking forward to doing our presentation and engaging the community. So, um, I think with that, unless anybody has any other items?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.